All right, it's nine o'clock, we'll start the meeting. Are there any corrections or additions to the agenda?
Commissioner Chairman, no, there are none today.
Okay, are there reports from the Commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I just have a AMC conference February 28th and March 1st.
Okay.
Two meetings from the AMC. Yeah, I guess I've got just a couple of meetings on AMC's meetings too.
I would have the ditch committee, what we had after the last meeting, and then report from AMC. All right, that'll be our agenda for today. We have the minutes of February 27th. Have a chance to look at those. What?
Motion second.
Motion second, those in favor, CI?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Number two, Gene, claims.
We have ninety-five thousand, two seventy-one, sixty-seven to be considered today.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second, any other discussion? Seeing none, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Chuck said, I talked about, because the meeting was short, that I could just talk about the agenda at Redwood County when we have that.
Yeah.
Just as a discussion, not decision making, obviously, but I guess what I, I don't know if Commissioner Potter and Simmensen, if you got the email, I think I sent an email out. And if not, that's-
I don't remember seeing it.
Okay. What I was thinking that we would have to do was elect a chair-
Yep.
-to run the whole, or not?
I don't know, I mean, it's, I don't know when we do a, we have official-
I don't know.
We do, I don't know if we need to do that there, if everybody feels we do. I think this is kind of an informal comeback with a recommendation, talk about issues and bring it back for a board, I don't know, what do you think, Gene?
Yeah, maybe more consider a work session, I don't, I don't know.
We can talk about that as one of those things, if they feel like they need to, and we don't typically, a lot of times, do it when we do this kind of a meeting, is we just share information and, because I think what we're trying to do is answer their questions and we find out where they're at and get our questions answered.
So if I call this a work session, so that would loosen it up as such, do you think?
I think so, I think that would be a good determination.
All right, and so then, well then I'll cross off the, that part, and then just introduce ourselves, redetermination of benefits on joint systems, the procedures, scheduled for the syst-, that we had proposed, viewer options, funding of buffers, construction easements, would those be topics-
Yeah.
...that we would probably bring up?
More than enough.
And then billings for drainage assessments, I know you talked about wanting to discuss that. Buffer ceding by the Drainage Authority prior to redetermination of benefits, I don't know, that's something that's, they're making available, that we could cede them-
Yeah.
-without having, purchasing the buffer, so I don't know if they want to do that. And, and then I didn't know if you wanted to get into the discussions about some of the procedural things that are supposed to go on with drainage joint, syst-, joint authorities, I'm sorry, you know, appointment of members, making that formal as a discussion, or do you just want to leave it as discussion about redetermination of benefits?
I think it's all right to talk about, because I believe we need to, was it Chuck that mentioned, we maybe need to go back and establish by resolution or something as to who's going to be, which districts are going to cover. For example, we get into Redwood County, it'll probably be District Four and Five will be, if it's, if it's required to, and then we'll have to determine who, which district will be the, the third person if we have the majority of the ditch.
Right, that's, we have resolutions for that. They also have a, when I was at the meeting down in Blue Earth last week, they talked about having resolutions for repair limits. We have some, but, you know, some of them are maybe old, I, I don't know if the dollar amounts are fair anymore, I-
I think, yeah, I think we have an agreement with Redwood County, don't we?
We tried to update, but their county attorney wasn't willing to do that.
And when there was talk, we tried to do that, that's been a few years ago.
And they were doing it down there, when we talked, they were doing it by ditch system, based on how much, you know, the percentage you have of it, you don't want somebody that's got four percent of a ditch system spending fifty thousand dollars, and the others are going to get hooked with the bill, obviously. So that was one of the discussions they had there, and Wayne had said maybe that wasn't a place to talk about that, and I'm fine with it, I just knew that was something that existed out there, and whether he wanted to talk about it at a work session or not.
It might not be a bad reminder to remind them again of what our agreement is with that, with Redwood County. I don't, I know one of them is new since we've talked about that, I don't remember whether Lon was on at the time, we worked with that the last time.
Oh, so then it would be good that, because there are new people-
It's a reminder as to, upbringing them up a little bit to what's happened. Redwood, Redwood County has turned a lot of their board over in the last few years.
I'm pretty sure Lon was on there when, when that was happening, but-
Lon probably was, but he-
But it would be good to, like you said, just to, so they know that that's still what it is, because it's never been amended or changed.
No, I mean, it, it's nice to go over some of those, if we get time, I put it toward the end, and if we start running out of time, because I think we have a lot of information to cover here, it's going to take some time to walk through. We have a lot more experience working with this than what they do, and we're going to have to explain our, what we do, and then listen to what they do, and then it's going to be a matter of time to establish how we're going to do it together.
I was informed that during the meeting on Wednesday, that Ron Rinquist is kind of phasing himself out now from doing redeterminations, and he's trying to turn it over, but there isn't really a whole lot that want to step forward, the elite viewers, so again, that shortages of viewers is coming to play, and we're in a good spot with having some, so.
Well, that's one of the things I will, I've done, I've been talking about how satisfied we are with what we have for viewers, and I, I think I'm going to push pretty hard to continue us to use those, because, and they, they've been receptive to working with what I talked about.
The counties that I was with last week, and they were ditch inspectors and auditor treasurers, and we only, I think Blue Earth was the only judicial county that was there, represented, and they said they'd take our group and drop a hat, you know, when we get there, they have no problem, and they look forward to working with them, so I know we have, we'll be okay there when we get that part. So then, then I'll make that the agenda, and I will make sure then, I'm assuming, I was, Jenice and Dean are coming to our meeting, is that right?
Yep.
And so send it in the mail probably, to be sure you get it, or?
Well, I'll be, I'll watch, if you put, send it over, I get almost all email, I just didn't catch that one, I don't remember.
Why don't you send it now, and then see, see if I get it.
Okay, I'll get it, I have to, they fixed a few things, let's just leave that in.
We meet next Wednesday?
Uh, March fifteenth.
Thursday.
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 And we have, we don't have a board meeting next week, do we?
No.
No, we have, planning is only, okay. Yeah, and if I don't, if I don't see it coming in a few days, I'll check with you.
Okay, sounds good, well, thanks for the input.
All right.
Anything else you wanted on, I mean, did I miss something?
I, I think we just, we'll have to go through all of those things, and then there may be other questions and answers, or we'll have to work with, and that's the reason we're doing this, this session, is because it may take a while to put both systems to a place where we can work together and are comfortable, and, and there will be a point, I'm pretty sure at a point where we'll have a full board meeting probably to, to talk about the issues.
Or make decisions.
I think it'd be a good thing to, to face to face with their board, because I know three of their board, there's two of them, I'm not sure who they are, so, and I'm the closest person, I mean, I'm right across the line from Redwood County, and so I, but still, uh-
Is this a meeting you take minutes at, do we take notes, or is it just?
It wouldn't hurt.
I think it would be all right, take some notes, and see, so we have an idea, and, because there may be questions come up, that one or one county, the other may have to find an answer that they have to return. You're going to be a resource, and Wayne is a resource, because you, you work with the financial part of it, and Wayne does the, out of the, in the field working with these things, so, I mean, those are, those would be a lot of resources we'll be looking at to help us answer the questions, and Dean and I can work with the, the policy part of it, to how we, what we feel we need to do, and what we've been doing, and stuff, so I think, we'll, we'll just, conversation is going to be a valuable part of what we do at first.
Okay.
Who from, who from Redwood is going to be there?
Lon Walling and Jenny Grebner.
Those two, okay.
Do you know both of them?
I know who they are.
And then I think the auditor and the ditch inspector as well.
Yeah, and then they were going to, they don't have the same system exactly we do, they don't have a ditch inspector per se, they kind of have a-
With environmental, I think?
Yes, with environmental office, so I don't, do you know exactly, understand how they work, Wayne?
I thought Brent Wayne was there the whole time.
Yeah, he is kind of, that's who I've always worked with in Redwood County, but he may not be there, I'm not sure, they said something about ditch inspector might not be there, and they would have someone from their resource office, which is the same, that's where they work out, it's kind of like our, a little bit more like our planning and zoning, probably.
Okay.
Well, we'll, we'll work through those people, I think, I think initially it's working with the board members and, and auditor treasurer to, to establish, answer questions, figuring out how that part works, and then we'll work through the part that Wayne and the ditch inspector works with as we go along a little further, it's, I'm sure this is complicated enough that it's going to take some time. We are some, I know we are somewhat different than they are, and they, so we'll have to work that, the differences out.
Sure, okay, so more of a work session than a formal meeting, just long and short of what I've learned here, so that's-
I think that's a good thing, I believe Chuck is coming, I think he talked about trying to get to him, so I think Dean and I will, I'm driving up on my own, for me to go to Redwood Falls is faster than going to a meeting with anyone here, and I think we'll let those of you coming from the courthouse go-
Figure it out.
-on your own however you want to get there, Dean, I don't know if you're-
Driving on my own.
Yeah, so, all right, we'll meet you up there then, and unless we have any other questions to talk about, we'll get in touch.
Okay, so you should be seeing the gentleman, very good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Yep, I appreciate it.
Okay, Wayne?
Okay, Sur, Bar and Grill has passed to the closed counter number twenty-four for one block, and Sur, they've done this, I don't think they've done it for a couple of years, but they've done it in the past, and the mayor doesn't have any issues with it.
Okay, motion second, any other discussion? Seeing none, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Number four.
Okay, it's just a normal monthly update. The CIR projects were awarded by the board back last meeting, the two municipal projects in Springfield, on County Roads four and five, we did have the plans done, but when I went and talked with the city council, they asked us to do some, to fix the radiuses on intersection, south side of the intersection of Act fourteen and five, so it's a little more complicated than that, because we have to deal with MinDOT, and so Andrew's working on getting those adjusted, but right now it's a really sharp radius, truck can't make the corner.
You're talking about the right St., just up from St. John's, on that hill, that corner, any coming from the west around that house, little house there.
Yeah, well, we're going to do both directions, as long as we're doing it, but that's the main one, people are jumping the curb and the grass is all tore up.
It's even harder to pick up.
Okay, anyway, we're going to cut the corner there and make a bigger radius, but to do, there's a catch basin right there, so that complicates things, we're going to pull that out, put in a new catch basin, extend the pipe, and it's coming from a different direction, so I'll put some elbows on it. We've talked with MinDOT, hydraulics, they're okay with what we're planning to do, but just going through the paperwork, and things are going to take some time. Andrew said he thought we'd, the plans would be done next week sometime, so MinDOT can review them, and we still have to wait for the permit, for working there right away. So I'm guessing we won't be able to bid that project until they get the approval.
Last, about a year ago, that little house was for sale, and I had someone come and talk to me, my husband, the county, buy that, build that lot, and make that corner decent, and I go, nope.
We think we can stay within the existing right of way, making that quite a good.
It is, it's, the angle is such that it just, it is dangerous from people turning it, in the turning process, and someone waiting for the stop sign, somebody's can't make the corner, so I'm going to hear.
And also, as long as we're doing that work, we're checking to see if the two manholes in the project are precast structures or are old brick structures, so we may, we may need to replace those if they're broken, because as they pave the road, the vibrating compactor may just shake those apart, that happened to us once in a sleep day, so there may be some more adjustments yet. The Purrville Bridge replacement, the plans are done, and we need to send those in to get checked over and approved by MinDOT. We can't bid that one yet, because we have to have a hazardous materials inspection of the bridge, we've got somebody lined up to do it, we just need a little nicer weather, so this spring when that's done, then the board set the letting bid for that.
Is that because that's a timber bridge?
Any bridge needs to have asbestos and hazardous waste inspection, it's just part of the procedures that started a few years back. We all know that the timber bridge is hazardous, and that's going to have to be, the paper trail will know where it goes, but there's things, like they look, check the caulking to see if there's asbestos in the caulking, or sometimes they had lead covering the wing wall button, or the wing wall piling, those have to be, just have to have a paper trail where they go. And, but we wouldn't build that bridge until late summer anyway, so it'll work okay with the, with the letting. The Conro twenty bridge, we're working on those plans right now, we're making great progress, we expect to be done with those sometime next week, send them in for approval if we come. And that one, we wouldn't build until later summer anyway, usually the waters don't on those things, it's best to build them late summer or the fall. Then the roundabout on twenty-nine, probably four, is scheduled to be bid April twenty-seventh, nothing really new to report on that. And ditch work, I didn't have anything special on ditch work, did you have anything?
No, just a few questions from the last round of reading, when the CD, when that schedule's coming, so just fielding a few phone calls on that.
Spring road restrictions in our area start today. Maintenance to spend most of their time on snow and ice vehicles, hauling the snow from the different county parking lots, I suspect after yesterday we'll have another big pile out here. And we did try to get as much seal prochips hauled as we could before road restrictions started, and we did get almost sixty percent hauled, so we're setting pretty good on that. Otherwise, we're just filling in with small projects, we had to haul some salt sand around, so we fill up the elk chuck bins again, that's what I had for my report. One thing I was going to ask, of the JD ditch, um, it's going to be tomorrow, is it? If you guys were going to go to that, or which one of us should go to that?
The what?
That's the one in Lockhorn County, or they're getting, proposing that big improvement? Remember I talked about that?
I attended as an alternate last time, I think, creating.
Don't know, don't remember who.
Which system it is, I have to look it up again.
They have, we should have asked Gene if they, that was one of the things we should have asked Gene, if she'd gotten a notification.
Yeah, she sent us a notification that they're having a meeting.
That's tomorrow, you said?
I didn't write it down.
Okay.
I can go back and check.
We'll look into it.
I don't, Tony and I walked down and talked to Gene after reading, checked to see what's going on with that, for sure.
We have such a small part of it, I didn't think we were going to go unless no one went, then, then one of us would.
It's still good to be there, I think, if it's-
Well, yeah, it is, if, but we don't have, I agree with what Wayne said, we have a small part of it, that it wasn't necessary, we will have, if I understand the process correctly, we will, when they start to go through the hearing part of it, two of the Commissioners from Brown County will have to be there, and part of that, the board that'll oversee that, make that decision, I don't know where that's at, or they're, they're doing information yet.
Yeah, the report is online, Andrew and I looked through it, it shows the six options that they're proposing.
It's going to take them a while to get those sides of the project put together to, to get to that point where they make a decision.
You got to look under their county?
It's more complicated than that.
Okay. Can you, can you send that, even?
You can send that, yeah.
We'll check to see who's, who's-
But if we send the Commissioner, do you think it's necessary for Wayne or Andrew to be?
I don't think so, not at this point. If we, after talking to Gene, if we have questions, we will contact you, and, and if we think one of you should go, we'll let you know, otherwise, informational wise, because we do have a small part, they're not going to do any of the, the work is not going to be on the Brown County's side, would that be a fair statement?
Yeah, as far as I know, there's no tile or anything, county tile on our side, there's just drainage area.
Basically, all we're, is we're involved by legal means, as far as what law says we have to do, and I would think that this is for landowners, it's informational, probably as much as anything, so anybody who's a landowner in Brown County that would be involved in that would have the opportunity to go to it.
But I thought it'd be good for you guys to know the report.
Well, if it won't, check on it, it's something I, we talked about AMC and I forgot to, contact Gene and check on it. Thank you for reminding us.
Okay, any other questions?
Motion except for the file?
Seconded.
Okay, motion second, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
All right, we're going to correspondence, so C one is the minutes of February twentieth. C two, highway committee minutes. Dennis and I work out, that's, I don't know if there's anything.
I didn't think there was anything, really, because I know the only thing, really good news out of this, we lined up with, fair amount of money that we had, on the past year, about a million dollar increase for us, so that's a nice increase over what we've had.
Good question on the spraying, it said, cost ground spraying for CD twenty was lower than expected.
What's, okay, what, yeah, the reason is, I'll give you an explanation quickly, and the way we bid it was so much for the project, we did twenty-eight, I didn't know this until we talked about it, but, and the contractor they have used typically does time and materials, so he gave us a price of so much an acre, and by time and materials, they were underneath that considerably, I think they bid at three thousand, well, I don't think about eight hundred.
Oh, my.
Yes, anyway, it was quite a bit under, so we had quite a conversation about how we do ditch spraying, and what process to go about now, and so Wayne will be addressing the board with that in the future, our thoughts were kind of along the line of trying out some of the ground spraying, ditches that have already got buffers on, to see what really the costs were going to be, because when you do time and materials, you really don't have a clear answer, so I think what we recommended that they do, there's three contractors that they can get to do this, and, or have, they're aware of, and I asked them to bid it two different ways, one time and materials, and one by the project. We have to have some way to compare, because according to them, they, a lot of them, they just are hired by the ditch to, or the county to, and do it on time and materials, and at least to start with, until we have something established, and then we need some comparison to look at how we find the differences.
I'm glad to see that, that's an hour, I mean, we wanted to do that, we do, it's always cost that was keeping us back, so maybe we can get more ground spraying.
You had my conversation a couple of years ago, it's been on my mind, and I keep after, and I probably got a little tired, we called it on that, and Wayne was concerned that the private contractor, well, the concern that us doing it ourselves would be, it's hard to find someone to do it year after year, a part-time person, and this would probably be cheaper than us hiring someone, so-
Everything with buffers is going to get ground sprayed, and then-
Yeah, that's-
Helicopters still for them.
We're going to do some of both, is what we're going to like to do, because we, we have, until we get to the point where all of them are buffered, it's going to have to be a combination. We're working on that, and we will, we're trying to address, we should be seeing that RBA coming out pretty quick, because we really wanted to get it started out before, before we didn't be the, we were, the July and August, right, running time.
This would have been a meeting that Dennis and twenty would have been at, not, not myselfs, I thought it was a ditch. Anyway, final committee? Anything else, Al? And C three, that'd be Master Gardener minutes, last meeting. Okay, we'll go on to Commissioner reports.
Mr. Chair, I had attended the AMC conference, of course, on February twenty-eighth and March first, and my report primarily involves March first meeting, many of you know, we had a little presentation regarding the emergency management readiness, and I won't say that it wasn't really thrown together, they're, they're trying to reach out and try to educate all the Commissioners, and just so that they, they know the direction that we're moving on that, I've been appointed to, to work with them regarding that, and what, basically what it is, is when you're, for emergency management, they're, they're really looking for some funding from the state, there, there's been state legislators that have talked about potential options, because they don't think it's going to be a high-cost option, they think it'll benefit certainly the state and the communities, and they're really looking for unrestricted money for emergency management, and, you know, of course, every county's responsible to have their own emergency management department, and, you know, and the counties as an arm of the state, they, they're the ones that have to fulfill the mandates, and if you go across the state of Minnesota, it's, it's kind of surprising, like each county, you know, some, the emergency management is, is led by the sheriff's office, which is, can be kind of logical, others are from other departments, some have, some have a standalone department where that's all they work on, Otter Tail County, I know that that's example, that one young man that was there, Patrick, that's, that's all their department does, so what they want is, they essentially want unrestricted money, where they can essentially fulfill those requirements that are constantly building, and where each county has a little bit of an opportunity to tailor it for their own needs, so that was, you know, and realistically, I mean, I'm saying this in, in public, but the first, this year's a bonding year, and our- this year's a bonding year, and our lobbyist from AMC, he doesn't really know what the odds are for this year. He thinks it's, the odds are against us, but he thinks it's a nice opportunity to educate, so that was essentially a big part of that, that meeting, that presentation, is just educating with what's emergency management is and how it affects the counties. And then next year, you know, he says he would go fifty-fifty, and then the year after it'd be bonding again, but, you know, we'll see. Then the year after that, he, he really thinks realistically, that would be pretty realistic, the odds would probably be in our favor, because you're looking at about three to five million dollars statewide, and then that would be divvied up amongst the eighty-seven counties. And that was it, that, that concludes my report, but I just felt it was beneficial to give a little bit of a background on that.
There wasn't any discussion, or maybe that isn't the committee or place that it happens to, for EMS funding, get them some dedicated dollars other than the seatbelt fine, that's.
Well, see, now, they would consider this a, a separate animal regarding that, and I think that's, I think that's a very good point, you know, that there could be some collaborative effort, but that would, they would, you know, consider that separate. But, you know, maybe we could work on something where that's a common theme, because it affects everyone.
Yeah, that's.
And they're, you know, they have diminishing returns there as far as the seatbelt money. So that's, that's, that's a very good point that I can, I can share. So that's, I just felt I, you know, I wanted to elaborate on it, I was, I was kind of expecting that Ramsey County, when they gave that report, I thought he, you know, he's very knowledgeable, I thought he'd maybe touch a little bit more on exactly what the readiness grant is, what, you know, what we're envisioning towards the future, but that'll be coming, and it just, you know, I, I feel compelled to, to share that, so that, you know, our county certainly knows, I guess, what her focus is, unless there's questions, that would conclude my report.
All right, a couple of meetings, the first one I went to was the first day up there, it's a drainage authority of buffer law, and I'd sat through this before. Basically, they went over the property rights and responsibility of the ditch authority. They gotta inspect every five years, once the buffers are in, and after there's a violation, it's every year until it's corrected. And if the system joins a watershed, any improvement petition would also go to the watershed for them to consider. The retroactive compensation, to put a buffer in before it even redetermined, and it's two years later, the land is still valued on its use previous to the buffer, I think we all know that one already, too. The environmental and natural resources committee meeting on the second day, got a little information of a, it's Minnesota Shade Tree Axeman Council spoke on Emerald Ash Bore, and they're going after that, and they're looking for money. It can be slowed dramatically if the trees are treated, but of course, that costs money. But once they do it, the treatment is ninety-five percent effective, so they've, they've had good results, but they have to attack it. And like everything else, it takes money, and that's what they're after. Mark Johnson of La Sard Sands Outdoor Heritage Council spoke on land acquisition. When they acquire land, it takes about sixteen months, county has to be notified, but that's all it is, county has no, no real say. And a letter to the county shows the current taxes, then, and the expected pilt. Bob Meyer of the DNR spoke on Outdoor Heritage Fund, which is the funding source for land acquisition. Comments were made about the DNR neglecting maintenance on trails and focusing on buying, and we got the same thing last year, this is an ongoing thing. Mr. Meyer said the maintenance is catching up, and I just looked at the pilt, and I forgot to ask Jeanie, I don't know if anybody's got that in their head. The latest one I could find on the website is, we got about forty-three thousand in 2010, so I imagine that's close to that.
Just, but some of the issue with pilt that I don't think they talked about very often, or the fact that when this land is initially, becomes being our land, it's valued.
What it was.
Yeah, well, it is, but if you go back and watch history, in about five years, it goes down very little. And so, yes, they, it looks good when they start off, the payments are good, but it decreases rapidly, because it's based on value.
That's the flaw in the system, your sister has to go after it every so often and reassess, and when that happens, it's new determination.
That's a deceptive.
Right.
In some ways, it's deceptive, because they, the initial thing is, yeah, it's all good.
That's the flaw in the system, that's, and that's obvious.
And if I understand, the other thing partially correct, is a pilt is collected by the county. I do not believe it's less distributed by the county is the township or the school district are given any of the dollars.
Oh.
But I don't understand it at one time, and so what happens is, the township has to still maintain the infrastructure of roads and things in their township, and the school district loses those tax dollars as tax base for burning their school district. We still come out okay, but the other two entities involved kinda get hammered with it, and that's the, that's the reason I have pushed really hard on it. You're contingent with that, that we don't have any more acres on our, in land owned by the state or federal government, because they aren't, they aren't carrying their end of the load, and if we continue to have this happen, we dramatically decrease a couple of entities' funding to going. I can see right out in Mulligan Township is a place that they're, because they have a lot of land out there that's state and federally owned. It's gonna make it harder and harder for their township to maintain the things they do, or, that's okay.
You could kinda see school districts, I'm not saying that, you know, cutting their funding is good either, but, I mean, there is nobody that's in school in those, in those areas, but in the townships, where, I mean, they do have to keep their infrastructure there, and, and accesses and whatnot, so for them to be cut out is really.
Well, and seeing school districts, that tax base is important for them to maintain and operate on.
Yep.
And if they don't have those tax dollars from that base, then they, everybody else in that school district will be helping to pick up those dollars. So it is a somewhat deceptive thing, I don't know if a lot of people understand how this works.
One last item here, just kinda adds to what you're saying, this struck me, because then I, and I looked it up on the website, too, just to make sure it was correct. The DNR manages six point five million acres in Minnesota, which is about eleven percent of total Minnesota state land, that was more than I thought it was. And of course, a lot of that's up north, and it's the people from those counties that are really working this, so, and that's my report.
Okay, well, we had a joint meeting for public safety, and I think it was general. I think it was just general government. But they talked about the DNR system, the disaster that it's been, and the disaster that it still is, and.
The debacle?
Yeah, it's a, you know, they're handing out thirty, and this was Scott County talking, and they were handing out thirty and sixty-day permits with no fees charged. So basically, because they can't get a license issued, they can't get a title transferred, they are losing revenue for these thirty and sixty-day permits, but they're trying to give them, so they get a license, so they can drive the vehicle, right, I mean. So anyway, yeah, that was one of the big things they were doing, obviously, the legislators said, they spent ninety-three million already, and they wanted to spend another ten, twelve, and then immediate funding, and then forty-three on top of that, and down the road, and private industry has stepped up and basically said they could do it for about fifty-three million, and have it, a brand-new system up and functioning and operating that they've done in, I don't know, it's five or eight other states, which seems to make sense to me, that we would support something, something that could be split, the cost of maintenance and upkeep, five to eight ways, instead of doing it all on our own, and then trying to support that system after it's all done. Basically, when, when they, when they come up and they spend ninety-three million, and then they demand another ten to twelve to keep operating, you know, that, that extortion, is that a close, I don't know. But anyway, then they talked a very interesting area on IDs, driver's license versus real IDs, and the standard driver's license, enhanced driver's license, the real ID driver's license, and each one does a little something different. And the license bureau is gonna have to explain this to everybody who comes in when they renew their license, and they figure it's gonna take at least five minutes a person to explain which one you should be purchasing. And basically, if you, the Scott County theory was, probably buy a standard driver's license and get a passport like you've done in the past, and you'd have everything covered, but there is numerous different things, some of them you can go international waters, some of them you can only do domestic, some of them you can do domestic in Mexico and Canada.
There's standard driver's license, enhanced driver's license, and the real ID driver's license, and they each do something different. So they're gonna have to try to manage all three of those, figure out which is which, so.
A real treat.
There's thirteen states that fast, Enterprise has.
Thirteen states or less?
Thirteen states today, yes. And, and with that, you know, that they're issuing a thirty-day permit, so you got that increased traffic, because they're not coming in there once a year now, they're coming in every thirty days, so just multiply this every month.
And it takes man-hours to do that, and we don't get any revenue for it.
Yeah, and, and of course, they're, they're, the increase, they figured forty percent, up to forty percent more of what they've been handling there.
But their timeline, they're, it's at least a year, two years out before anything else really changes.
No matter which way they go. And obviously, then they went to the governor, the legislator said, take it to the governor, maybe he's got ten million dollars he wants to give you, and the governor, while we were in the meeting, public radio announced that the governor said, no, we're not giving any attention to that, so layoffs ensued, and that's where that's at.
And I, I heard on the radio that the forty-three million they were asking to finish this with, legislature turned it down.
Yes, and the governor did, too, so, yeah, it's. Okay, that was that one, I don't know if there's anything else there, Dean, no? And then there was a section on opportunity zones overview. Now, the real problem here is, is that the timeline was so crowded. The end was timeline here, the first deadline was March eighth, which is about two days from now, and then the, the final, like a drop dead date on there was the March twenty-first, I believe. But what this is, is it's part of Trump's Taxville stuff, that he, they have designated areas, opportunity zones, areas that are, you know, low in income, high in poverty, that people who would do investments into those areas would get tax credits, large tax credits, and encourage investment into those areas in order to help them develop. And so the governor gets to select twenty-five percent of our, whatever we have designated out there as the zones that we think are important, they've already designated what, what areas they are. So long story short, I did look, and went into their website and looked to see in Brown County, because the original map was so tiny and non, you couldn't really see if Brown County was, you know, in that area or not. And so I did go in, and actually, in New Ulm, there are two zones in New Ulm, and I did let Counselor Schultz and Counselor Fisher know about them, and if they had any questions, call me back, I haven't heard anything back from them. But again, they're pressed so much for a timeline here, that I don't know that they could even get, get it up and running. We never heard a word about this until two days ago at the meeting, whatever it was there, so, kind of. But that's what that opportunity zone business is, and even, this is the low two fifty, it's the, like, the worst two fifty, two hundred and fifty cases in, in Minnesota that this map shows. There was four hundred and fifty-some cases that they identified, and you actually could even apply if you were within five percent of that area, within five percent of the area of one of those opportunities zones, so. Don't know that that's going anywhere, but that would let you know what.
I think there's, there's still input for that map, I think, in the next week or two, and then.
Yeah, they were gonna try and get a thirty-day extension.
And then they define that, and then from there, it's, there's other timelines.
Well, yeah.
Okay, I guess that's, I had those two things, too, as a map meeting, and the drainage committee meeting Dennis and I had last week, basically talked about buffer seeding this spring, we're gonna try to seed everything we can, as soon as we can. Is there seven, seven systems, or was it more than that?
Thought there was more than that, I thought it was like, was that two hundred acre, no, was it that much?
It was quite a bit, yeah.
Quite a few acres.
And who's, is the highway department seeding there?
Well, they, they contract.
Contract, no.
Contract. They've been working with the company that does construction, more road construction, but they've been satisfied with what they do, so, they would be working on that, I don't know if there's more than that, it's the only one that's been bidding on it or not, but, you know, there's been some concerns, a little high, but, you know, you take the lowest, but you can get it.
So they're gonna do that, we talked about the spraying options, we've talked about that with the ground spraying and the helicopters, be doing that this year, so it'd be nice to get that comparison and see, we'll probably sometime go and look at them and see what kind of results we got. Talked about the joint meeting with Threadwood, as we talked about again, and if there's anything else.
I think, I don't remember anything else. The only thing I was gonna mention about AMC is transportation, we had individual from MINDOT who oversees the corridors of commerce, and he went over the process, how this was all shaking down, and kind of tried to explain to us how they're gonna make the decision of where the dollars are going to go, it's on a point system. The bottom line was probably early to mid-spring, I think we talked about April, sometime maybe they would have those numbers figured out, which ones would score the best, and get the, I'm assuming that's who gets the dollars they did. That's kind of what I'm assuming your system is, but it's a fairly complex thing, they had a hundred and, I think they had a hundred and sixty applications for this. Some of them were, there's different organizations within that, there, so, but it's, to me, it looked like a very complicated thing. And in some places, they did talk, remember the, the talk we had was, someone talked to me about this, and make sure we got that recommendation letter sent in, well, and if, and if, how that works is if, it's one of like about seven, I think there were seven different categories, or maybe more than that, but if they don't have every organization, or government organization involved in this area, it's zero points. And they said it's just about, eliminate you, they think, if not everybody does. There, if, if some other organizations, I recall what they were for, but they, you could get extra points by having a couple of letters from other areas within your, the district. This is a new process, so I think there's gonna be some learning going on as how this is done, because they weren't sure how they were doing some of it, and I think it's, when you actually do something compared to when you plan to do something, it sometimes turns out different.
I talked to Wayne, and, you know, we had that concern here about sending that letter, if it was enough what we had sent, and he, he contacted MINDOT and confirmed that our letter was good, and we did not need to send anything further.
Yeah, and I, so, so that, that was one, the biggest part of our, our process meeting was talking about, was working with that part of it.
We have responded, anyway, so.
So we should be good to go, so, hopefully, we'll, come this spring, we'll find out how, how it's working there, and we'll go forward.
I just wanna comment on the legislative meetings that we had with the other counties this year versus having it on our own. I thought, I thought they went well, we talked to Reddell County Commissioners that evening, and I think they were satisfied, didn't hear anything negative. So I, I think we all have same, similar concerns, and they were happy to hear what we had to say, and I guess we heard a few things of what they were interested in, so. I think it helped the legislators' timeline.
I think it helped the legislators timeline, you know, otherwise they would have four more meetings that they didn't have time for, so.
Well, that and the busing system.
Yeah.
The busing system was nice.
And all, all it was, which, and we didn't miss some of the session though, because of all the legislative meetings done in a period where nothing else had happened. Otherwise we went up the hill, talked to them and sometimes you came back and you missed a session you wanted to take back, see. So, I would agree. We, we go back a few years, when I first got on the board, we, we did some of that. It was meeting, we met with a group like that and you get in, this was better organized than that was. At that time I didn't think, well, I, I think, my own feeling was, I probably did very well in that session. I, I thought that, um, all the commissioners stepped up and, and to plead on, on being, putting points forward. So I think we, at least I felt we exhibited the leadership position and was that.
I thought we had the best representation too.
Yep.
A lot of counties were only a couple commissioners in there, which, you know, there's different reasoning, but it's usually all there, so.
It's a commitment by a county to make that happen, so I think we do our job.
Okay. Anything else before we go to calendar? Okay. Uh, today is the sixth, correct?
Open.
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 Seventh.
Open. Salary advisory committee at two-thirty.
Open.
Is the water festival, is that tomorrow?
I think it is.
Okay.
I'm not sure, but I.
Well, I've got, I don't, I won't make it there. Um, ten-thirty USAC and then two-thirty.
Oh, God, yeah.
Salary survey.
I'm open.
Okay, the eighth?
Open.
Open. Labor Management Safety Committee, eight-thirty. Enterprise North, three forty-five, that moved with the weather. That's.
Okay, I'm open?
Open.
The ninth?
I'm open and I'm, um, Gail, I'm on vacation through the eighteenth.
Open.
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 Okay, the twelfth?
Open.
Open.
Brown County Historical Society, seven o'clock.
I got two trail interviews, one to six.
I'm open.
Thirteenth, open.
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 Thirteenth?
Yes.
I have planning on zoning, uh, in the morning and then, uh, town board meetings are that day and I plan to catch our township and work some county fair.
What time did you say your town board meetings?
My town board meeting will be at two o'clock for North Star.
That's the thirteenth, you said?
Yep.
I'll try to make our results so that evening. Okay, the fourteenth, open.
Open.
Uh, Drug Courts Steering Meeting, meeting, Ulm, four o'clock.
Open.
Open.
Fifteenth?
Open.
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 Redwood Judicial Ditch Meeting in Redwood?
Same.
Sixteenth, open.
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 And the nineteenth?
I have a workforce, joint powers workforce meeting at four.
Open.
Uh, Minvac, uh, six-thirty and a Parks meeting at seven o'clock here, so I got, because of the weather, seven o'clock.
I'm sorry, I need to have you repeat that again, Commissioner.
Six forty-five, uh, six-thirty is Minvac in Mancito and there's a seven o'clock Parks meeting up here, which I'd love to attend because.
Commissioner Borger, did you have something on the nineteenth?
Yes, I had a joint powers workforce meeting in Mancito at four.
Is there an alternate for Min- Minnesota Valley Axeman Council?
Where would I have that? I'm just wondering if you're already in Mancito at four. Minvac at six-thirty.
Yep.
I don't want you to get an alternate.
They'll get done by the time.
Yeah. Committee roster.
Thank you.
I used to carry it.
Make sure you carry it on the right side or if you do it, you're gonna get it. I gotta learn to balance now.
I guess it doesn't matter for an alternate there or not. Um, is that something that you'd consider?
Sure.
Um, I look to get both of them taken care of.
Six-thirty you said?
Six, yeah, six-thirty is the, uh, is the committee meeting and then seven-thirty is the main meeting. It's at the, uh, thrift store. Do you have a, do you know where that's at?
It's where I actually have my workforce.
Oh, okay. Yeah. Committee meetings in, in Amanda Mackey's, the, the director's office and, and the, the other meeting, they'll direct you down to Paul to the main room to do the other meeting.
Okay.
So if you do that, then I'll do the Parks at seven.
So Commissioner Borger, do the MVA C meeting at six-thirty and Jill at seven, do the Parks.
Yeah. Okay, is that it? Um, I've got Minnesota DNR River Conference Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday of that week. Um, they have a commission meeting on Tuesday. So it may be something I may miss that one.
Where do they have that meeting?
It's in Blue Earth. I don't exactly know, but this is a, it was, there is a, a feed of register. I'm assuming if they're talking about the future river.
I did.
In Birmingham, I guess. I'll, I'll have to talk to you about that. If that's, if I'm going to do that, I'll miss that. Okay.
We're in nineteen twelve?
Yes.
Okay, there's that Redwood cot, where that, um, RCRC meeting landed in the afternoon, but I don't think I'm gonna make it today. I got something to make in over in the morning and hopefully I'll be back in time.
That's kind of an over the odds, uh.
Yeah.
One watershed, one plan.
And they're actually gonna be, right, we're, talk about what the rap's involved and the other parts leading up to the one watershed, one plan process. It's a, it's a, like I said, a four, about a four-year process to get there, so, um, it, that would include both the river to river and the, the.
Now, is it one o'clock, right?
Uh, yes. Kind of a nice information meeting if you can make it to go and find out what's gonna be happening over the next two years.
Yeah.
I don't think necessarily, everybody has to go, but if you get one person to go, that would be helpful.
I thought something you can make totally.
I was thinking I was gonna.
Okay. All right, then the twentieth puts us two weeks out, so. That would be it for calendar. Is there anything else?
Okay, Gail, can you check if I'm enrolled for the MSSC conference on the twenty-first, twenty-second? I would think that, uh, Tom Henderson would, I'll call him once too, but I don't know if that registration has been sent or not.
When is the employee recognition bank?
April eighteenth.
So I do the, I'm myself, we show.
Five days.
Yeah. Will you, what if you and I and Simonson, would you, kind of, if myself and you and Simonson? The only one you don't get to tell us is our.
Okay, but there's nothing else?
I'll get help with the school.